We'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for March 14th, 2013. And if we could have roll call.
Pro Tem Sinica.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Director of Fire Prevention Bureau Kaufman.
[coughs]
Director of Emergency Management Services Strali.
[inaudible]
Acting Director of Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Village Planner Ziegler. Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Thank you. I will stand for the pledge allegiance.
[inaudible] Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No requests for open forum this evening, so we will move right on to reports. Just briefly, I wanted to congratulate the PVPN on their performances of Bleacher Bums. It was just hysterical, well done. Westview Middle School hosted it, which was really nice of Marker to let us use that facility. It was a wonderful, wonderful play, great evening, great three performances, very good. Also, the People's Resource Center, right here in Westmont, is requesting donations of prom dresses. In these tough economic times, there's a number of people out there that would love to go to prom, but can't because they don't have the money to get the necessary dress and all of the accessories. So if you have a prom dress that you'd like to donate, any accessories, jewelry, shoes, that would be great. And I also wanted to just mention that we had the Chamber of Commerce Community Awards, too many to even begin to go into. Just amazing, all of, many businesses were honored. Mayor Ron was honored by many. We had the Citizen of the Year, Hank Enzalone. We had Paul Harris, Linda Sabatka, just a number of them. And it was really well done and very well attended. And then the last thing I have is Holy Trinity and the Village of Westmont will be having the parade on Saturday, the St. Patty's Day Parade, that kicks off at 11 o'clock. Starts at Cass and Norfolk, thank you. We'll head down to Holy Trinity. After that, a festival right there in the south parking lot, heated tents, lots of good corned beef and cabbage, so I hope everybody comes out on Friday and Saturday for that. And that's all I have. Madam Clerk.
First thing I want to do is thank that wonderful Public Works Department, that sticky, sticky, awful, snowy weather we had. We haven't had a meeting since then. They did a wonderful job. They were out there working their hearts out and they kept us afoot and a driveable, which was wonderful. So, that's basically all I have to say. Like you said, the Chambers Awards tonight was wonderful.
Great. Thank you. So enjoyable. Attorney Zemanek?
Thanks. Just like to ask for an executive session to discuss the sales, setting the sales price for real estate. And that's all I have.
Manager Cyril.
I would like to draw attention that on Monday, kind of a follow-up to our award last week, we'll be giving our annual update regarding the Village Climate Action Plan. And also wanted to let the board know, I'm going to add another item under my report to talk to you briefly about our, I think, an outstanding award we received this week from our self-insurance pool. It's very significant and I'd like to recognize some of the people that helped make that possible. So, that's our self-insurance pool, the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, so I'll put that under my report as well and have that here on Monday. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Trustee Fleming?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Trustee Klebenow?
Just want to report that we will be having a building and zoning committee and the code enforcement committee. It will be Monday at 5:30, right here. So it's 5:30 here. And other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy St. Patty's Day this weekend. Thank you.
Thanks. Trustee Nero?
Just to, you know, repeat what you said, congrats to all the Community Awards Dinner. It was a great event, a lot of fun, good food there. And secondly, I hope everybody can make it out this weekend. Parade's going to be a lot of fun in Holy Trinity on Saturday and Friday, we're going to have a lot of fun too, so look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Trustee Emery?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott?
Nothing from either, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, is there anything to discuss on the consent agenda? To remove?
I should point out that the finance ordinance amount is $1,032,755.14.
Thank you. Anything else?
I sent in a correction to the minute, I didn't know if you got it. I emailed it to you.
Oh, I didn't get it yet. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just give it to me right now, then.
Okay, it's for the voting night on number five, the liquor license fee waiver. It's showing La La Lee Bakery and it should be Uncle Bubbs.
Sorry, we changed it.
So just change your name there.
Okay. Okay. We'll go ahead with unfinished business. South Westmont Business District TIF ordinance, board to consider an ordinance adopting the South Westmont Business Tax District Tax Increment Financing, SWBD-TIF District.
Good evening. I'm very pleased to announce that the South Westmont Business District TIF is ready for adoption following a favorable outcome at the Joint Review Board on January 16th, negotiation with Marker School District, and a well-attended public hearing on February 4th, which was continued until February 19th. The process of creation for this economic development incentive near 63rd and Cass goes back nearly a decade through planning and market analysis that culminated in the selection of TIF consultant TESCA Associates who worked with the village on the creation of the district over the last year and a half. It is through this TIF that the village seeks to revitalize an otherwise underperforming commercial area to reduce vacancy, improve infrastructure and streetscape, and reposition the sales tax performance of the area in order to complement the other business districts in the village and support the goals of the newly adopted comprehensive plan. Staff is in the process of working with the consultant to create protocol for reviewing funding requests. And should the board adopt the TIF on Monday evening, we're very excited to bring about lasting change to the community. I'd like to thank the residents and business owners who participated in this process. And I'd like to thank the village board members for their vision and dedication to seeing this through. And staff is of course happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anyone?
Just a clarification, there are actually three ordinances involved. I know the agenda kind of listed as one ordinance. The ordinances were drafted back in December and presented as part of the first joint review board meeting, and there were no objections at any point to the form or format of the ordinances. I'm just going to clarify for the agenda, for the vote on Monday, that you're going to approve three separate standalone ordinances. One establishes the district, one adopts the plan, and one establishes the tax increment financing as a tool.
As long as we have the plural of ordinance, it will clue us in, thank you.
How bold and underlying.
It only took us a number of years to figure that out. We just learned that.
It's not ordini.
I think I'd just like to thank Shannon and the staff for all the time and effort you guys put in with working with TESCA, because without your hard work and everybody else's, we wouldn't be here tonight with this, getting ready to vote on it for Monday. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure and it's truly been a team effort, but I appreciate those comments.
Well said, thank you. Anything else? Okay, this will be on then for Monday. Term limit resolution, board to consider a resolution to request the future board of trustees to place a referendum on the ballot to limit the term of elected officials to two consecutive terms, except for the village clerk.
I still think it's a good idea.
Yep.
I don't.
I can live with it.
I'm okay with it.
I have no problem with the resolution at all.
Can I make a comment? So I circulated the draft resolution by email to you all this afternoon, and along with the resolution that's next on the agenda, and if I can, I kind of like to talk about both of them. I subsequently started some research about whether this village, as now a non-home rule community, can actually appoint its village clerk instead of elect its village clerk. The section of the Illinois Constitution states that local government entities can, you know, have referendum on term limits and the, I think it's the method of appointment of officials. And we kind of took that language initially when one of you suggested it as, yeah, this seems in line with the language. But then when you go back and read the municipal code, it mandates that the clerk be, is an elected official, just like the mayor and the trustees, except in communities of less than, I think it's 5,000 or 10,000. And there's several references about the fact you have to elect your village clerk.
I'm actually okay with that because I still think that the village clerk shouldn't have a term limit, but I'm okay with the elected because, like Ginny, in setting yet another example and raising yet another bar, goes out even when she's uncontested and goes door to door.
Every day.
And I think that's, I was going to ask to remove that anyway, because I think it's important that the clerk get out and meet the residents. And if she's just appointed and sits in there, she's not going to do that. And I love being out. And I'm a walker anyway, so I just really would rather be elected than appointed.
Okay.
Johnny, maybe rung on this, but I thought I had heard that if you elect a treasurer, then the clerk could be appointed. Is that a?
No, it's, you can also, you can combine those two positions, which is what Westmont does, and the treasurer also can be appointed. Okay. In certain communities of a certain size. But there's some attorney general, non-binding opinions, some case law, and it seems to flush out the fact that that method of appointment of officials deals more with whether you have partisan or nonpartisan elections, things like that, not whether they can be elected in the first place. So, based on that opinion, and by the way, the research was just forwarded to you because it was just finalized later today, but shall we remove that item from the agenda then? And leave the other as worded, where you're going to accept out the village clerk from the term limits?
Yes.
I'm in favor of it.
Yeah.
So we will then remove item C.
And it's going to be the public that decides anyhow.
Exactly.
Correct.
Totally no different than it is now.
There's no term limits for anybody, that's your problem, I guess.
And to clarify again for the public, all you are doing is passing a resolution urging the next village board or corporate authorities to consider placing this referendum question on the next general election ballot, which is November of 2014.
Correct.
Which they don't have to do.
Right.
Just because we recommend it doesn't mean...
And to back up what you said, I did notice that in the paper, almost every city was electing a clerk.
Right. I'll point out Downers Grove is appointed, but they're home rule. And that's where the attorney general opinion comes in, where they say, well, you're a home rule community, you don't have to follow the mandates of the municipal code unless you're preempted.
See, before we lost home rule, we could have appointed Ginny for a lifetime appointment.
Whether she wanted it, whether she wanted it or not.
Why, what were we thinking? Damn.
Anything else?
I don't want to become Elmer.
I don't think anybody could.
He doesn't say a lot.
He's one of his own.
I think we should bring him back. Okay, let's move on to new business. 2013 official zoning map, board to consider an ordinance approving the revised zoning map of the village dated December 31st, 2012, as the official 2013 zoning map. Our planner approaching the podium.
Good evening. I'm here to introduce the 2013 zoning map. This is required by state statute to be updated on an annual basis, no later than March 31st, which we're approaching. The changes that have taken place over the past year have all been incorporated and included in the board's packet for your review. And if the map is approved, staff will print off large-scale maps next week. There were no boundary changes. The updates included four or five lot splits and consolidations, but there were no annexations last year. Addresses were updated accordingly, and helpful minor address changes were also incorporated to address some public safety issues, questions that we'd had over the past year. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
Boy, we're an inquisitive bunch, aren't we?
Yeah.
You do a good job all the time.
Yep.
It's a difficult item.
Okay. Thank you, Joel will put it on for Monday. Service agreement, Chicago Communications LLC, board to consider an ordinance approving a service agreement between the Village of Westmont and Chicago Communications LLC to cover the emergency communications center equipment.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of my South Fire Chief and EMA. The equipment is housed in the Yale Communication Center. It's the emergency communications center, and we have a service agreement currently with Chicago Communications. It's an agreement that we've had over several years. This year, we worked with Chicago Communications, asked them, we revised some of the equipment that was going to be covered under this agreement, and also asked them to be, look at their prices. And I'm pleased to report that based on the efforts of the Fire Department, EMA, and Police Department together, this agreement will result in about a 50% reduction in cost.
Fifteen?
Five zero, 50%.
Whoa.
Where we were paying close to $1,300 a month, we're paying now $615 a month.
Wow, nice.
Some of the equipment has changed a little bit and we moved some things around, but both departments sat down together with the EMA, figured where can we reduce some cost, where we can affect some cost savings and change some of the service agreements with the equipment. I will say, as I said, and they're both Fire Chief, and I unanimously agree that this is a good move.
Anybody have any questions for Tim? Okay, we'll go ahead and put this on for Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Service fee increases, new revenue sources, board to consider an ordinance to increase existing fire, Fire Prevention Bureau and EMS service-related fees in addition to implementing new revenue sources. Chief Wise?
Thank you, good evening. I'm Mayor Pro Tem and trustees, my staff and I are here tonight to present to the board increases in current service fees and recommending new service fees. These fees were presented at the Public Safety Committee meeting in January 2014. It was a recommendation, this committee, to bring all of these service fees to the board meeting, which we're doing tonight. My staff and I would like to let the board and the citizens of Westmont know that we understand the hard economic times that we all are going through. But with the home rule not passing and the reduction of several million dollars in our village revenues, this has resulted in a large reduction in the Fire Department budget. If these service fees being presented tonight are not approved, it will result in the possible cutting of possibly contract medics, part-time firefighter medics, part-time officers, and part-time support personnel. This will result in a reduction of life safety and services we currently provide to the residents of Westmont. I wish we did not have to charge any service fees to our residents, but the cost today of continuing to the service at this dedicated Fire Department staff and department gives 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, results in us bringing this forward to you tonight. With that, I'd like to move into our presentation and have Acting Director Kaufman come up. We're going to review the fire prevention fees first, and then move in the EMS and then cover the miscellaneous.
My section of this is regarding the Fire Prevention Bureau fees and how it relates to that part of the Fire Department. Up in front of the board, if you can see it, do you have these packets, I'm assuming? Yes. Okay. Our fees for plan reviews are antiquated and old. We did a research project involving surrounding communities to see how we related to them as far as our plan review fees go. And as you can see from this first chart, to even bring us, the rates we're proposing bring us under what most communities are still charging. I found through my experience that most people, when we were talking about new projects, plan review fees are part of, part of the expected costs. It's not usually detriment, it's part of a fixed rate that they expect to see. If anyone has any questions, we go about any of these and specifically let me know. Does everyone understand what the building plan review is and the fire plan? As a result of these fees, we would anticipate this increased rate. This is a little hard to come up with because we aren't fortune tellers, but we kind of have an idea about what we did last year and consistently what things will be coming up. And you can see by increasing these fees and consistently invoicing the fees regardless of the project, we can see an increase in revenue at the Fire Prevention Bureau side. What this showed here is, by doing an analysis in 2006, when everyone was going crazy with development, you can see we did a lot more plan reviews in the subsequent years. But the good news is in 2010 through 2012, it was pretty consistent. So we were doing projects and doing plan reviews, so work was being done. And that's how we based our numbers for our estimates. These were fees that we recommended, they're actually on the books that could be considered by the board. Not only would they be for revenue generation, but more importantly, to meet our primary objective of gaining compliance. Specifically, the first one for the reinspection fee is where people have been told the first time that there's a violation and they neglect to fix it. They've been told the second time that the violation needs to be fixed in a certain amount of time and they neglect. They've been told after that second time, if there's a third inspection fee required, there would be a fee attached to it. The current books call those to be $25 per inspection. As you can imagine, $25 per inspection doesn't even get anywhere near covering our overhead costs. So that's where we come up with $100 per third inspection. It's almost more of a compliance tool than a revenue generation tool. And it would be kind of a last resort, we'd make sure people knew that we want compliance, we don't want fees. Certificate of Occupancy, again, as businesses come in, we would do these inspections and there would be a fee attached. Right now, the $50 fee doesn't even cover any of our, we don't even break even, it's losing money at that point. And then the false alarm fee, again, is, it's a safety measure, it's a compliance measure, and hopefully we'd get people in line, so if there's trouble alarms or a lot of nuisance false alarms, we can eliminate them by the fees. There would be a rate, there's not a rate increase, but we did ask the board to consider us letting us invoice them, because we haven't been invoicing them in the past. And we did some estimates, these numbers are best guesses, for lack of better terms. We look back at our records from the past two years, and there's approximately 200 violators every year that would go to the third violation that would get this, this fee assessed. And I'm going to anticipate that, once that happened once, it would never happen again. So that number would go down in the future. The certificate of occupancy, again, as development increases, that number would keep going up and we'd see more revenues from that, which is a good thing. And again, the false alarm fee is, as a compliance tool, I would anticipate that you would see that number go down. Yeah?
Sorry to interrupt. Just so the record's clear, the fees are increasing to, primarily to cover.
Expenses.
Staff costs. So while you mentioned that this is a revenue generator, it's a revenue generator only so much as it covers the staff time to conduct these inspections, do all the paperwork, everything associated with that.
A well put.
Because fees can't in and of themselves be imposed just for each.
No, it's not, it's not a profit center. At $100 per incident, it's not a profit center still. There's, I could show the numbers if you'd like to see them, but no, it's not.
Fosser much higher.
Oh yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Larry, I have a quick question. Why have we not been invoicing on false alarms?
Typically, we try to handle those in-house, and as a Fire Prevention Bureau, our goal is never to fine, our goal is to comply. So, we go back and we, you know, 30 alarms out of all alarms we have is not that many. And these are perpetual violators. And, you know, they'll fix it, and then two months later, it won't be fixed again. Perhaps a monetary amount added to that punishment might start to incline them to keep it fixed. That's really the only reason.
I think the other thing is, when I took over as chief, we, Larry and I kind of did a thorough audit of the Fire Prevention Bureau. And when it came to fees and finding documentation, that it seemed that we were only charging fees maybe about 60% of the time. It wasn't consistent. Then we had fees that were on the books, like Larry mentioned, that we were not invoicing for. So, that's why we brought all these forward to you, being that we were going to bring all the rest of them, and we're just trying to clean this up and try to be consistent and enforce what we have.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Piggybacking what the attorney had to say, I mean, even with these increases in these fees, I think the public still needs to understand, the amount of money you're talking here is not going to offset.
Our costs.
What is needed and what our cost is. We're only trying to cover some of the basic stuff that should have been done for years, but, I mean, going forward at this point in time, this is not going to cure the problem. This is only going to help at a little bit, because the amount of money you're talking here is, it's more, but it's not.
It's about $46,000 total, which is, we spend a lot more on the, it's, when Larry says it's not a profit center, it's just the opposite. It costs us more to do these. So to try to offset the costs is appropriate.
And most of these are for businesses doing business here in the town, it's not the residents.
Right. Point.
And our surveying that we did of the surrounding communities, all the communities have these charges and they even charge more than what we're recommending.
Right.
So.
Thank you. So assuming this is approved on Monday, when, would this be automatic implementation, starting immediately? Or what is your plan for that?
There would have to be an ordinance change to reflect the numbers that we have here.
Oh yeah, absolutely. And the only exception is where plans have been submitted and the fee paid under the old system and those plans are still in the process of getting reviewed, they're not going to get hit with the new fee.
Okay.
It's only for new.
The good news is we turn those over in 24 hours, so if you say yes tomorrow, we can start trying to break even, so.
We're getting closer to break even.
And I don't think this is anything anybody wanted to do. No.
No.
I mean, really, we wanted to be as reasonable as possible to attract people at this town, but given the circumstances.
Don't have a lot of choice.
We don't have a lot of choices.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Fire Prevention?
Okay, thanks.
Lynn's going to do our EMS fees.
Good evening. Okay, I'm going to talk about, again, we've brought to the Public Safety meeting in regards to the increase in ambulance fees. And part of it would be, is that this is what we charge already. If you can see that the current rate for the BLS resident, BLS non-resident and that. And then we did another study in regards to eight, I think it was eight surrounding communities, as to what their ambulance charges were. So this would be the average of those communities, is in the next column. So we made the decision to actually change our rates then, to go a little bit up, you know, from what those rates were. So that way we can collect about what the average is. So then it shows as to what the increase is. And it's not too much of an increase. I think the most hit is actually more towards the non-resident people, we take more of the hit than anybody else. The next one is where we actually did go back and look to see as to what we really did bill out in 2012, as to the current rate and what we, you know, actually billed out. This is not collection, so this is just what was billed out. And if we would have billed out in the new rates, as to what the increases would be. So it would have been approximately, well, almost $113,000 increase, as to what was, what would have been billed out with the new, the new rates. And like I said, it's just really going as to what the average of the ambulance charges are going for the surrounding communities also. I mean, we actually had a study of, I'm trying to think of, probably over 60 communities through the Chicagoland area, and we could have done a study to see what those averages were, because some of them were quite high, and then some were quite low, you know, a little bit lower than that too. So this is pretty much average, as to what everybody's being billed.
Lynn, just quickly, for the sake of the public.
Sure.
Could you explain BLS and ALS, so folks know what that is?
Oh, absolutely.
And how it might impact them.
BLS is basic life support. That means that all we basically do is we go out and we give just, you know, basic. Whereas, say, you know, somebody goes and they cut their finger or sprain an ankle, we'll splint it, and they need transport, then we transport. We're not doing any monitoring on that person, we're not starting an IV, we're not giving any drugs or anything like that. So it's just basic. That's what ALS is, it's advanced life support. That's when we actually put the cardiac monitor on people, we possibly could, you know, give drugs to those, that person, do an We possibly could, you know, give drugs to those, that person, do an IV, those types of things. So that would be a little bit more advanced, you know, work that we do. So that's why the differences in rates, because we do a lot of different things, you know, more so for those type of calls.
So in the case of where an ambulance is called to a business or a resident and they're, we don't transport to a hospital, we just do a little
Non-transport. Those basically, actually, we're going to get into a charge for that
Okay, I'm getting ahead.
A little bit later, but that's okay. But non-transport, where we get called out and we're not transporting, we're just, you know, like maybe a person, say, their blood pressure might be a little bit high and the family member calls saying that they're worried about them. So they call us out there. Person doesn't want to go, we check them, we check their vitals, there's really nothing wrong, you know, at all. Then we'll have them sign a refusal. Those are not billed.
Okay, those are not billed. Not even mileage?
Nope, nothing's billed on those. No, no. So, but like I said, we're going to go into a little bit different scenario coming up here.
Thank you.
Which is like some of our new EMS fees. And that's that first one that's right on the list here. And it's the response charge for treat non-transport. And what that means is that we actually do treat some of these. We'll go out there, say, and most often it's a diabetic. So we get called for a diabetic, their blood sugar is low. So what we'll do is we'll actually start an IV, we'll actually push glucose to get their blood sugar up. A lot of times we'll get there and this person might be totally unconscious. And when we check their blood sugar, it's like, you know, sometimes we'll get like a 10 or a 20 on their blood sugar. We'll push glucose on them, it'll come up, the person wakes up, they're absolutely fine. They don't want to go to the hospital. We get a refusal from them and we go on our way. But we still used equipment. We actually had to start a line on them, we actually used drugs on them. So we have never billed for those. This was something that actually was approved, the last increase, which was back in 2010, if I'm not mistaken. But it never got put into the ordinance. So we have never been billing for them at all. So. Now, you can see, there's a different charge for, of course, resident or a non-resident, you know, patient. We had last year 17 resident patients that we went out for. So that was almost $6,000 in revenue that we could have received. And then we had two non-resident patients that we went out for and that's like $1,500, you know, that we could have billed for. The next charge is what we call a patient assist fee. This charge is actually for when we go out and assist a patient where they call us to just, you know, either pick them up, they'll want like move from a chair to help them into the bathroom, to go to the bathroom, they, or they might need to go from the chair to bed. We do this. I mean, we get called for these types of patients. And there's usually not too, well, I shouldn't say that, there are a lot of times we will go out to the same person a lot. And it depends, you know, as to what the problem is. Sometimes they don't have enough help, you know, at home and they need, you know, assistance and that. So there is a lot of times we'll actually go out numerous times for the same person. You know, sometimes just a couple of months, sometimes throughout the year. Okay? And we're looking at charging like $100 for each patient assist. Last year, there was 288 times that we went out for patient assists. So it's close to like $29,000 in revenue.
Insurance companies cover patients?
Medicare does not.
No?
No. I did check on that. Medicare and Medicaid does not. Insurance, self-insurance or like say Blue Cross Blue Shield, a lot of times what they'll do is they'll deny it the first time. But then what happens is, is that the billing then sends them the actual report on it because it is a 911 call and a lot of times they will pay for it. But I know for a fact that Medicare and Medicaid will not.
My understanding, the supplements, because my husband has it and my cousin, they only pay the 20% from Medicare. If Medicare refuses to pay, they refuse to pay. So we're hitting our seniors now with this full bill.
But using, using the, using 911 to be like a nurse's aide takes an ambulance out of, and crew out of service.
Where would you like, is there another number we can set up for our residents, especially our seniors? I mean, my aunt had fallen out of bed, there's no way my cousin could do a damn thing.
That's different, falling out of bed and you've got somebody laying on the floor.
According to this, they would be charged $100.
It would, it is correct, it would be $100.
But we can't be a personal on-call system to have this done. I mean, granted, I understand what you're saying, Pat, but I mean, that's something that unfortunately, and it's a terrible thing to say this, because, I mean, someday it'll probably be the situation, I need help or whatever, but there has to be other organizations. I mean, we, the seniors, the senior stuff in DuPage.
Yeah, DuPage Senior Citizens Council.
I mean, we have continued to make sure that funds go into that. I would think that there's some kind of programs within DuPage that they could call to, you know, for assistance.
Because this isn't a fall, this is somebody that needs to go from the chair to the bathroom, the bathroom back to the chair, the chair, I mean, that is, that is normal nurse's aide stuff that, you know, if you can't do it on your own.
And you know, if it happens, you know, once, maybe the person has just returned from, you know, the hospital. But when it's two, three, four, five more times in a year, they need, they need more assistance than calling the fire department.
But 288 in a year, that's less than one a day. So that's why I'm thinking that if it's, we could do the same thing. If it's somebody who's constantly doing it
Might be the same 30 people.
A second or third time, then you could start charging. But I hate to start charging.
I think Lynn said that there are some
That are repeaters.
This past year, just take for instance, this past year, we had one particular person who, we were there 39 times.
Well then, I'm saying for the repeaters, I could understand it. But I'm not, I'm looking for the people who, you know, may not be the repeaters. You know, you go there once a year maybe the most.
That's different, that's what we're talking about. That's different.
Well, no, we're talking about anybody according to this. We're talking about anybody. They make a call and they go over to a house and somebody fell, you know, and there's, they can't get into bed.
Pat, a fall is different. It's clearly different than just, you know, Lynn has explained
This is an assist fee. It's a different category.
So you're not charging if somebody calls and says, "Mom fell out of bed and I can't lift mom to get him back in bed," then there's no charge?
If there's, if there's a fall and they call 911 for an emergency because they don't know if they're hurt or not, no. Because that's a regular refusal for us. Because then we're checking to make sure that there is no injuries or anything. This is more for slipping out of the chair, having to be moved from the chair to the bed, from the bathroom to a chair, or from the bathroom to a bed. I mean, this is some of the calls that we do get for this.
The reason we're bringing this forward is because we did a study for the last four years, the numbers keep on growing and growing and growing. And what we're seeing daily is when we have these, for some reason, all the ambulances are out. We have an ambulance and two medics tied up on a call like this and there's another ambulance call comes in. And now we're getting a muti ambulance from Downers Grove or Oak Brook. And then we're using, losing those fees, you know, for transports. And the other reason is, is Concordia has a policy that their staff will not assist anybody. So they call 911 and we send our ambulances there daily.
Their staff is
Yeah, five grand a month.
Their staff actually stayed, it's stated in their policy that they cannot assist a person up from the, you know, from the floor up to the chair. If they slip off the chair
He's the enduro or something.
Yeah, they, because it's like back injuries, they state, they don't want any of their employees getting back injuries. So like I said, I can tell you, like, last year, Cordia alone had 69 out of the 288. That's where we went.
Well, and again, you know, the point is we're trying to cover our costs more than anything.
Right. I mean, there was a couple of different times where we actually had all three of our ambulances were tied up. So that means we had two ambulances, actually, and if the third ambulance is out, our truck is out of service because the two medics off the truck go. So then we did have a lift assist for a person and the engine went, and the engine can go in and do that, as long as we know it's a lift assist. I mean, what if we get there and the person is injured, then we're calling in another ambulance.
Well, and to take, to take an engine out to do that, if Cordia's got that, that policy, then their residents are going to have to bear the cost of it.
They don't
If that's one of the things that when you move in there, that they tell you, "By the way, if you, you know, missed the chair and, or slipped out of it, we're not touching you, it's an ambulance call," then it should be a, it should be an assist fee. It, this, you know, if you do triage and all that, guess who's bottom of the list? And we've got our, we've got our EMTs and our equipment and even our engines out on these? No.
Well, and as we see our population getting older too, this is just going to get worse. And where does it go from there then?
But if this
Go open a can of worms on this one.
This is that they have this, this thing in place because they're afraid they could have a back injury. Would this not go into the place of they call 911 and it's a refusal because they feel fine once you get them back in their chair? Why would that not be a refusal?
A lot of times what they'll do, what we'll do is we'll assess the, you know, assess them. If they actually fell, you know, out of bed, well, before we even move them, we ask if you have any pain anyplace at all. Sometimes they might have a little bit of back pain or they might have hit their head. That actually, we're assessing and we'll decide if that's a, you know, if it's just an assist or not. Usually if it's a fall, it's a refusal. We're going to actually do a report on that and get a signature from them on a regular report. Patient assists, we just have them fill out one sheet of paper and sign off on that and we just make sure that everything is okay, you know, that we just assisted that person, you know. But if a fall, if it's a fall, no, we will do a report on that.
Our fire department's been very generous to the community
Mm-hmm.
When there's been times that it's been needed to. And I'd like to let them make the decision on what it should be when they get there.
I agree.
Because there could be times when they'll say, "All right, this one doesn't warrant it." But we're not there.
Yep.
And if we see these numbers keep going up and up, who's going to end up paying for it?
Yeah, but I'm afraid when they need it, they may not call it.
Well, if, where they're living, if they're not going to be taking care of them.
Well, I mean, I mean people at home.
I understand. They'll still call.
I mean, the thing is, we trust, we trust our EMTs and our fire department to take care of this stuff and make those assessments when they get there. And I think that everyone would have to agree that I'm sure that the right judgment's going to be made when that's done.
What's been going on for years, if there's been an issue where someone couldn't handle it?
Does anybody else have that policy or is it just?
Yeah, there is a couple of other departments that do have that policy. Tri-State has the same type of policy where
No, I'm in policy where they, the people in a nursing home or something, they can't lift them.
That I don't know.
Okay. You just know it happens to be that one.
Yeah, that was just in the news with the CPR.
C P R.
That, yes, and that was like, that is like what Cordia is, which is an assist, that's an assisted living facility.
But they're not assisting.
I know. I don't even want to get into that, but
I think they're considered more independent than assisted.
I know for a fact that they do have CPR training because I train Cordia and CPR. So I know for a fact that they know CPR and they do do it, you know, people that go down over there. So, but nursing homes, we never have an issue with nursing homes or anything because they actually have nursing staff there.
Staff.
Exactly, that lift them all the time. It's more or less the, you know, the assisted living. Maze Lake, we do get quite a few calls out there for sometimes patient assist, but not too often in regards to those movements and that because they have, you know, they have to be able to be self-sufficient to be there. So if we start seeing issues there, usually, you know, we
Because I thought these places had like nursing staffs on and I would think a nurse would be able to assess somebody if they slipped out of the chair and
They have, they do have RNs like at Cordia, but most of them are CNAs.
They still should be able
Certified nurses assistants, yeah, so.
And a lot of them don't have it 24 hours either.
Right.
They'll have them during the day and then at night.
They do have 24 hours.
Do they have them over there?
Cordia has 24 hour. There's people that are 24 hours. Now Maze Lake is, like I said, that is just
That's a retirement, it's not assisted, but they do what they can to keep them.
Exactly, it's a retirement village. They have nursing staff there, but just during the day, Monday through Friday.
Right.
So, you know, I, I agree. I think we need to trust your judgment.
Yep.
You know, this budget's worse than ever and more than ever. We have to find ways to cover our costs for the services we provide or the services are going to go away. And we don't want to see that.
We wouldn't have brought this fee forward if we didn't see it, that we felt that it was really climbing and really tying up our ambulances and our medics. And we're seeing an increase in amount of calls where we have to call other towns to have their ambulances come in to take care of a residence.
Yeah.
And not that these are not real emergencies because they've gone there before for these and they've been injured and had to transport them. So they still all get assessed and checked.
We're not saying we won't go, we're just
Yeah.
But this is kind of on the same avenue of the emergency rooms today. People are going there for non-emergencies and tying them up.
They get sick, they go, you know.
Yeah. Instead of calling the doctor, it's the emergency room and ties it up for hours.
They can't get into their doctor.
Right.
And plus the
Or they don't have insurance.
Better coverage in the ER.
Yeah, exactly.
Insurance covers it.
But here's, here's a question for you. You may not have the answer right off the top of your head. How many miles to a gallon does one of those engines get? How many miles to a gallon does one of the paramedic vehicles get?
I'm going to say probably for the ambulance, maybe six or seven.
And the engine is like .5.
And it's top-heavy and you have a lot of equipment inside of it, so there's a lot of weight on it. Engine?
About three.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is that if everything's tied up and we have something major or whatever, but if it's tied up and then you have to go outside, you know, let's say I, you know, break my neck on the stairs and downer shows up, guess what my bill's going to be? Non-resident.
Non-resident, yeah.
So our residents are going to end up paying more.
So it's going to link to Cordia and
And that's even, and then there will be those that will say, "Well, yeah, but you have mutual aid." No, you have mutual aid. The reason you have mutual aid is to back up when all of your equipment is out on the street. It doesn't mean that the fees are going to be the same as a resident. If downers comes over here and has to take care of it, well, one of our units is out someplace else. And vice versa, if they're tied up and our units go out into their towns, they're going to get charged on resident fees too.
Right. If I'm not mistaken, we have a, we actually do have an agreement with the surrounding communities where they bill our residents their resident's fees.
Okay.
Now, not, I'm not saying that it's, it's any lower or any higher than ours, but they will bill resident fees.
But still, that's not any consolation. Our, our equipment shouldn't be sent out on frivolous stuff, so.
Well, and it's taking an ambulance out of service in another community because we're helping someone get to the restroom. Yeah.
I agree, we leave it to your discretion and err on the side of billing.
Okay.
And just so you know, we still have the same philosophy and if we collect from insurance from residents and what is not paid is written off. So it would be the same for, for these, you know, if we collect, we collect, if some, insurance only pays 50 of this, the other 50 is written off.
Right. And the thing is, is that a lot of times, and this is where regular ambulance calls too, it's Medicare pays and then sometimes they have a supplemental insurance and they and they might have a balance. If they can't, if it's a hardship, they can't pay it, they need to call us and let us know. Because otherwise, we, it doesn't automatically get written off. So, you know, the residents need to understand that. Maze Lake is really good about it because they take, you know, they always go to here. You know, they have the social workers and everything that really take care of us. They're always calling me to take care of, you know, things like that. The same thing with the hardship, you know. I mean, sometimes we have residents that are in hardship and they don't have insurance. They don't have a job. So it's, it's not where we're cold and I don't wanna raise rates. I don't wanna have to charge for all these things, but I wanna still be able to provide our services to the residents too. If we can't get this revenue in, we could be using, we could be losing some paramedics and I don't wanna do that.
Right. Chief, you got a couple of other items on there?
Yes.
You want?
Yeah. The next five items are, are items that are fire-related fees. And on your Naperville EMS survey, several of these are on there that department's currently already charged for. So we felt that we needed to bring these fees forward too. And the first fee is vehicle accident fees and this would be a charge for the fire vehicles that go on the auto accidents. And that $250 charge per vehicle takes into account the three personnels, hourly wage, the fuel, maintenance, wear and tear on the vehicle. It's a standard rate that is being used throughout the state by fire department. So we just didn't make that, that rate up, we, we're going with what everybody else.
Chief, that per vehicle is based on per vehicle involved in the accident, right? Not, or is it per vehicle called to the scene?
Per fire, per fire vehicle.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And last year, we had 77 of them that we responded on. You could see if we had billed those. And all of these, these five fees that we're recommending are billed directly to either auto insurance or homeowners insurance. And again, we've checked with some insurance companies, some do pay, some don't pay. If they don't pay, then, then they don't pay, there's no, there's no fee. They may not pay the full 250, they may only pay 200. We'll take the 200 and waive the, write off the 50. If they're, of course, if they're non-residents, then we've always not done that. We've always, you know, continued on to retrieve the, the rest of the fee.
So for residents, you always do that though?
We always, for residents, we always write off whatever the balance of any bill is.
If they don't cover, there's no charge?
Right. Auto extracations, a lot of departments have been billing for this for a lot of years. And again, the $500 is, is another fee that was on the survey through Naperville, EMS survey. We usually only get maybe one or two extracations a year. For some reason, the last six months we've had, or eight months, we've had like four or five.
Wow.
You know, and so you never know what's gonna happen. And, and our big equipment squad responds on the extracations along with our ladder truck, an engine, a duty chief and a couple of ambulances. So the $500 fee is a fee for extricating victims out of cars and using that special equipment. Just to add a little bit to that, our extrication equipment we have on the two engines right now is 21 years old.
Oh, wow.
A lot of repairs to the power units and we're hoping that we get another year or two out of them, but they're about $8,000 to replace the power units.
Lynn, what's the fee now?
For-
Auto extrication?
We don't charge them.
Oh, okay. Because you've got proposed fees, but I, I don't know what the-
There's, these are all brand new.
Oh, these are all new, they were all zero before? Oh, okay.
Right. We didn't charge for any of these fire ones before.
Okay.
Vehicle fires, this is again for apparatus and personnel to 250. And we had in 2012, 15 vehicle fires that we would charge $250 to the auto insurance carrier. Fire response fee, this has come out the last couple of years where homeowners insurance companies are paying a $1,000 fee to the fire departments for coming and extinguishing fires in structures. So when we have a confirmed structure fire, that fee would be assessed to the homeowners insurance and what was paid would be paid, the rest would be written off. But again, it's a fee that just come up the last few years and insurance companies are, are paying that fee. The post-structure fire fee is for our investigations. When we have fires in town, by state law, we have to investigate every fire. So we have anywhere from, you know, four to six investigators that are out there at an hourly wage and using investigations could last from as little as two hours to maybe up to eight hours, depending on the extent of the fire.
Does some insurance typically cover that?
Yes.
Is 200 an appropriate fee?
Well, that was, we based that on hourly wages for, you know, two to four people. It's on the low side. Again, we get maybe 12 to 14 fires a year, so it's not a, not a big item. But again, it's all, it, these are all new fees, so we try to be reasonable with them.
Chief, on the extraction, on the 500?
Extracation.
Yeah, the, did you say that also includes the vehicles or they'd be also charged if two of the vehicles came out with it?
No, this won't be per vehicle like the accidents are. This will be just for extricating victims out of cars. So if we had to extricate people out of two cars that were in the accident, then there'd be two separate fees of $500 each to the two car insurance.
But the car, but the insurance companies are usually paying for that?
Yes. And, and that one is on the Naperville survey of all the towns that are charging that right now.
Usually if we're extricating a car, it's gonna be total because we're actually turning doors off and yeah, it's off and that too.
Yeah, usually a jaws-of-life type situation.
Or covers or what others, so we're actually paying full car part. That's an extrication.
The jaws were in there.
Any questions with the EMS or these fire ones before we move into the miscellaneous items? Come back if you, if you do have. I asked Deputy Chief Conley to come up now and talk about the wireless alarm monitoring fee that we're proposing. He's researched this and has a lot of important information on it.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening. The wireless, you're well aware of the discussion on the wireless and I don't have to recap most of that. Current wireless fees are at $55 per month. The contract we have with NORCOM proposes a $10 increase to $65 starting in the fourth year, which would, fourth year of the contract, which would be a year from now. Basically, our proposal is to move that timeline up and impose that $65 this year instead of waiting to next year. If we have 600 alarms in the system, $10 a month equates to approximately $72,000 in additional annual revenue to the village. And to put that in context, what that means to the fire department, that's one paramedic on duty, eight hours a day, 365 days a year. So the revenue is significant. It's an increase that's going to happen within the next year. Anybody who has signed a recent contract, yes, anybody who's signed a recent contract, the NORCOM contract with a subscriber has a one-year fixed rate. So if they sign it at $55, within the last year, their $55 continues on until they have their first anniversary. So it wouldn't be somebody who just signed a contract and they would get a, a rate increase. It would be at least a year at $55. Somebody who signed one four years ago has enjoyed the $55 rate for that period of time. For sake of comparison, you know, many of the wireless charges around us are significantly higher than that. And some of you may recall when we proposed this two years ago, the actual starting rate that we had proposed was $65 and at the direction of the board, we lowered it to 55 to encourage businesses to come in and take advantage of the service. But even at 65, significantly lower than surrounding averages and significantly lower than any, you know, normal alternative of using phone lines or anything else. So I'll just stop there and see if you have a question.
Jim, what is-
Yes, ma'am.
If I'm understanding it correctly, the alarm goes off, it goes to NORCOM?
No, actually, it's NORCOM's equipment, but it goes directly to the Downers Grove Dispatch Center, our dispatch center.
So, so is this again a situation of covering our costs? And how, like, where do our-
It's a very good question. I mean, depends which cost we're talking about. But again, put it in context, out of that $65, we, the village, only collect a very small percentage of that today. And that was based on your direction to not go to 65, to keep it at 55. If we increase it, we would collect either all or a portion of that additional $10 a month.
Only for this year though, right? Then next year, when they raise their hike, we won't get this additional revenue.
We would have a portion of it, because NORCOM would definitely get a portion of it starting next year based on our contract. At that point, you could decide whether you wanna keep it or change it. Again, we're still way below kinda market average. But to answer your question, if you think about just putting it in context of what our costs are, our dispatch costs are over $100,000 a year and a significant portion of what dispatchers spend their time on is monitoring and answering alarms. I couldn't even believe the numbers myself. Our dispatch center told me that they physically touch alarms something in the hundreds of thousands of times during the year. And this is why, if you go look at kinda the market rate for monitoring alarms with the dispatch center, it's about $15 per month per alarm. We're very fortunate with Downers Grove, they don't charge us that rate. Our rates would be significantly higher. So we as a village are, you know, not even covering our dispatch costs with the, with the amount of money we're collecting.
Good, good. So just to clarify again, for our businesses-
Yes.
We're not raising this to, to make money off of their fire alarm systems. We're just trying to cover the cost of the equipment and the answer. Okay, thank you.
Not even counting the billions of dollars for, for the people who have to respond. If you think, on our fire activity, if you take fire alarms and trouble alarms, all of which we respond to, that, off the top of my head, that's probably 40% of our overall fire activity. So if you took 40% of our fire budget, you'd be talking about, you know, $1.6 million that we're not offsetting any of that.
Yeah, I guess not.
Right, doesn't drop in the bucket.
Thank you.
Good question. Anything else to questions?
Um, about the community room rental, and then I'll come back to my question.
I'll let the chief handle it.
Okay, all right. This was, this came out of our officers' meetings and brainstorm sessions we had the last four months and I brought this forward on behalf of the, of the senior staff. You know, and, and their recommendation was because the village right now with One South Cass rents out that space, we get a lot of phone calls from organizations outside of Westmont that wanna use our community room at our headquarters station. So they felt that the, this could be another item that could generate some revenue for outside organizations that wanted to come use our, our community room. And it's a nice-sized room and we have the parking for it. And so that's why that, that is on there. And again, that's, that's just an estimate. You know, we going back and we keep track of all the calls that come in and all the different groups and currently we have a lot of associations from Westmont that use it. We're not recommending charging them for the use of that room and we have a lot of, you know, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and groups like that that come and do their first aid patches and things there.
Does the cleanup after all done?
The firemen have to. Yeah, the, and again, we just replaced chairs that were about nine years old and falling apart and the fire, South Fire District graciously did that for us. The tables are gonna have to be replaced, the carpet should have been replaced maybe three or four years ago. We clean it every year, but it's, you know, a lot of wear and tear.
I think that's a wise decision.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Yep. I think it's appropriate, too, with one exception. When you start renting out public space to private entities and charging a rental for that, you can lose or partially lose the tax-exempt status on that real estate, which is why with Westmont Center, that gets leased out to not-for-profit organizations or other governmental organizations. Even though we charge for maintenance and upkeep, we, we can do that legally. So here, you said you don't charge for like local Boy Scouts groups, other not-for-profits, whatever. And you can certainly waive fees for even for-profit if they're in town, if you want. If they're out of town, is it for-profit or not-for-profit from out of town, you're gonna charge a fee?
That's what we're recommending.
Okay, which is fine. Can we change on this sheet, instead of the word rental, reimbursement? And then we should have some short form that they sign to acknowledge that is a room cost reimbursement form? Because they don't wanna get into the business of leasing. I wanna get into the business of asking these groups to reimburse our costs for electricity, cleanup, overall room maintenance, things like that.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
And then-
Those homeowners associations. Yeah.
No, we're, we're happy to have them come there and we have the doors open and the coffee on for them and-
I have a question slash comment regarding the wireless alarm monitoring fee. We just said, no extensions. We heard a lot of people say, you know, that you're gonna drive me out of town and we said we're gonna require certain things by June 30th, by December 30th and by the end of the year and by next June in the phases. Ergo, and, and I understand, I understand, trust me, we, we, we're all in the, getting in that budget frame of mind. But I think to increase the alarm monitoring fee in addition to dropping the hammer on the installation of it, I would like to see that we do that maybe by the, you know, to take effect the end of the year, as of January 1, because these people are now expending the money to do what we are requiring them to do despite a lot of protest.
Just wait until the government raises it?
And coupled with that, I think that the post-structure fire fees for investigation is low. I think it should be 500, not 200. So I would up that and then kick the $65 wireless fee to January 1 because we, we want 100% compliance. I think that's very reasonable.
We have thought about the same thing and same considerations. Just offer a couple thoughts, not arguing one side or the other. Given that June was the sort of compliance date and with the action you've previously taken, businesses should be moving towards that with the initial installation, which would, should include the connection, which would be wireless. An alternative you might think of is, you know, tie it to that compliance date, which would be June. Everybody who's going to do and be initially compliant should be coming on the system. So the people who would pay the extra would be the, the late or recalcitrant ones, not the compliant ones.
Well, the thing that led me to think this was when you said about people who sign up will get the $55 fee for a year. So the recalcitrant ones getting it cheaper than the ones who have complied earlier doesn't sit well with me, which is why I thought at least let's take it out to the 1st.
Understand your point, the, I think the way, another way to look at it is, everybody who has complied has, you know, most of them were at $120 something a month and got down to 55, so they've been enjoying that savings for one year, two years, three years, four years. Those who come in now within the compliance date, say before June, to pick a date, they would enjoy that $55 and they would enjoy it for a full calendar, full 12 months. And the only ones who might be penalized, who wanna think of it that way, would be the ones who just missed the date altogether and come in after June. The only reason January would be a little bit problematic for us, if we think about it, if we don't impose it to January, typically they're billed quarterly, that's not till the end of March. We might not see any revenue in this, this budget year. So there's a, you know, just a financial impact of not seeing any of that additional revenue this year. That would be the downside. The longer you put it off, you know, every quarter you put it off, take one, one quarter of the revenue out. In fact, the 72,000 annualized number, we'd probably only see three quarters of that if we implemented it today. So that's the downside of waiting.
Right, and, and I understand that, it's just that in order for us to accomplish our goal of getting the structures and the tenants and the residential tenants in safe mode, we need compliance. We don't want people blowing it off. And as far as I'm concerned, that's my goal.
Okay.
Period, right now. So whatever you guys think about the raising it, I'll go along with you, but I, you know, I'm just, I wanna get those alarm systems in.
When, when is the year for them? Is it when they come online or do they get switched, is it prorated and they get switched to a calendar year?
No, it's from date of contract. So if they sign up on June 1, it's June 1 this year to June 1 next year.
So it's all throughout the whole year, you have the-
Yeah, contracts are all, all different dates. Our contract with NORCOM anniversary is March 11th, I believe. And trustee makes a great point, you can look at it either way. Either, you know, delaying it, having the $55 gives people more time, but on the flip side, you know, if I know for sure my cost is gonna go up if I wait till after June, I might be more inclined to get it done sooner. So I mean, I don't know which way the dynamics work, but those are the counterbale. It's the incentive to get it done now, that's the alternative.
Have, have you taken into consideration or factored into your projections late payments, non-payment? Is there a penalty? If they don't pay, what happens? Is any of that factored in?
And you don't mean just for alarms, but for all the fees?
For all the fees.
Oh, sorry.
Everything.
Well, with, with the alarms, NORCOM handles that.
Yeah, they pay NORCOM directly.
Right, so they pay NORCOM directly, so they handle that. I'm not sure what their procedure or policy is.
Okay.
I'm sure they do have follow-up on that. Right, but we still get paid our quarterly fee that, you know, that they give us. All the other fees, you know, like, like I said, if you're a resident, we collect what is paid to us, what isn't, is then written off. If you're a non-resident, we collect what is paid to us and the balance of that. Andre's billing, Lynn's here, she can probably explain a bit more. They send it to collection.
Okay.
And they do, do a good follow-up.
So I think the question is, when you have these budget projections, was there a discount? Are these based on 100% collection of every expected call? Or was there some discount for non-payment and bankruptcies and whatever?
Basically, what we bill out is now what we give back. If, let's say, we go to collection service. So what happens with collections, if they do collect that fee, then they take more of a percentage of that bill.
Right.
So we don't get, you know, that whole bill or anything.
Based on your pie chart, isn't what we can reasonably, because, you know, you've showed your pie chart at the committee meeting level, that it's around just shy of 60% collection?
Correct. That's what collection you get. So whatever we have billed out, and I think last, was it over, a little over a million dollars? I don't have it in front of me. But we would, we actually collect, would collect approximately 60% of that. Now, the downside on this is, is that because of the sequestration, Medicare is now, we're only getting, we're getting 2% less on payments.
Right.
So that is going to be a huge difference right there. So in that, you know, of course, we didn't know that until just, you know, a week ago or so. So we really don't know in regards to how much percentage of a bill we're going to get now.
Okay.
What we bill out.
But these numbers are projected at 100% collection.
Right.
And if the board approves this, when we plug this into the budget, I would assume we, as we are conservative, we will discount them to some extent to take into account for the fact that we don't collect 100%.
I think we're going to have to discount it 40%.
On the phase-in program, when do you have to start paying your monthly fee? So let's say if someone decides to start the process in June and they don't finish for a year, when do they start paying that wireless fee? Is that right in June, too, with the first part of the phase?
Right, the wireless fee will be paid upfront.
Start right away?
Right. Compared to the fire alarm fee phased in, that they're pay for the main panel upfront because that's the biggest cost. And then when they move into the other, the second phase, to maybe put in the heat detectors or smoke detectors, then the last phase may be the pole stations.
So the wireless service starts right away?
As they do that, then they pay that portion done.
It's almost like a benefit, as we're saying, hey, you know, we're telling you to do it by June, but if you do it by June, it's going to be cheaper. If you wait and don't listen to what the, what we're saying, then it's going to go up. So I mean, it's, I see it as an incentive.
Yeah, that's true.
For them to do it, you know?
Absolutely.
I do have to report that, you know, since the passing of the alarm on the 4th, we've been very active with a lot of calls, a lot of requests for information. And I think we've taken about five or six of the people off our list that have completed already.
Oh, good.
So, and, you know, Larry, yeah, Larry had mentioned that, you know, he feels by June that we're maybe have that 15 or 20 people that may elect to do the phase in.
Great.
Okay.
The last thing we got on here is sell surplus equipment. As you know, the Reserve ladder truck, 1829, 29, has been declared surplus already.
You're going to put it in the St. Patty's Day parade as a sayonara run?
There you go.
With a "back for sale" sign on it.
There you go.
And I've been checking with companies that do purchase these vehicles and then resell them. Naperville has the same sister truck that we have. And they had one company out, and they did not take their truck because it didn't have a pump on it. And ours doesn't have a pump on it, so, but I believe our truck is more attractive and in a lot better shape than I think theirs is. So I'll be starting to have companies come in to look at that, to see if we can get any offers on that vehicle.
That'd be great.
And I'll let Deputy Chief Conley talk about our surplus radios and portables that we have from switching to Starcom. And those have not been declared surplus. So if you want me to do those, we would have to bring them forward to you, for you to declare them.
Real simply, we have quite a large surplus of radios now with Starcom coming on. We have a lot of old radios. Good news is we can get rid of a lot of them. Bad news is they may not have a lot of value. Many of them can't be narrow-banded, which is the current requirement. They may have some value to ham operators and others. We'll probably declare some surplus and ask you to waive those to give to EMA for their ham use or something like that. We don't think it's a huge amount of money, but we would extract whatever we can out of that if you were so inclined. And we'll bring that surplus list forward. We have all inventory, you know.
Yeah, I think, you're not using them.
Sell them?
Yeah, so we can. Obviously, we have to be careful. We don't want to sell, much of what we have installed is, we still have conventional radios installed. If they go bad, I'd rather put a spare in that I have today rather than sell them for $50, than go out and buy a new radio for $1,000 or $2,000. So we have to, we'll find the right balance there. We'll come back to it.
That's, that's another one of your discretions.
As you can see at the end here, these are, you know, projections, estimates that we feel some additional revenue and increased revenue. And, you know, I do agree with Village Manager Searle that this probably will have to be discounted because of some of the ones that we're projecting are really projections, estimates. And I'll try with my staff to work on these, to see if we can pinpoint it down to more of a, you know, a number that we feel is going to be more appropriate. And then I'll work with Spencer and Manager Searle.
So what do we want to do? We want to leave it where DC Conley's suggestion for the implementation of the $10 increase? And I'd also like to see the post-structure fire fee go to 500.
I'm fine with that.
I think that's, okay.
Good. Just so our village attorney knows.
I appreciate, the post-structure fee increases, crystal clear. The $65 versus $55 wireless fee is going to take effect? June 30th, okay. Every other fee will take effect immediately except for that one, which will be?
July 1.
July 1.
July 1.
You know, regarding the ambulance fees and the ones that really affect the residents, I'm sure there's some sitting at home sitting there going, what do we pay our taxes for then? And, but most of these are user-based.
Yes.
So instead of raising the taxes, it's really the people that only need the service that are going to end up being, paying for it. The average resident who doesn't, won't.
I'm glad you said it.
Want fees, though, that's the only other choices to, is to raise.
Well, if you think that...
So it spreads it out across everybody, but is that fair for people then that don't need it or aren't using it or refusing it?
If you think that the $1,000 billed to the insurance company to fight a structural fire covers the cost?
No, no, no.
You know, it's like, holy Toledo, if they were to bill you for what it costs, you, why rebuild the house? You'd have to pay, use the money to reimburse the fire department.
But I think this is the fairest way.
Yeah.
You know, and I have a fire act grant that's in right now for three new LifePac monitors because we have three that our repair person tells us that they probably ain't going to make another year. They're $30,000 apiece. I have that $90,000 grant in. I have not been rejected yet, but we just got notice that they're removing $112 million from this year's current fire act grant and SAFER grant money because of the $85 billion that was taken out back in the 1st of March. So all the grants, current grants that haven't been answered have been put on hold until they can now look at what monies they're going to have left and see which grants are left that they can fulfill. So I'm hoping that we'll still be rewarded that. But if not, you know, next year, I may be coming to you for an emergency purchase of some new monitors. And that's what these fees go for.
We'll be driving ATVs.
Any other questions?
No, any other questions, Dave?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for all of the information.
Thanks for all of your work on that. Okay. Nothing under Ms. Laney's?
Yeah, I got something I want to throw on the table real quick.
Under Ms. Laney's?
Yep.
Go right ahead.
Okay, now, we've done away with the resolution that we're asking them to do as far as the clerk goes. We also now understand, as far as the home rule scenario goes, the bottom line to home rules that stands right now, as we're sitting here, is we wait for the next full census or we're going to have to put in for a special census in order to find out if you've got that. The resolution that I'd like to see put on the books going forward is, it goes in as a referendum in 2014.
Thought we had to wait 23 months before we could have another referendum for that purpose? Is that correct?
Yes.
But that's two years. It was in November of '12, and this one will be in November of '14.
Oh, so we could do it.
Yep.
I say do it.
I say do it.
Okay, with the...
I've already had residents ask me if we're going to do it, so...
Because, because as it stands right now, and I'm sure, matter of record, I mean, the manager can tell you that we were rejected, correct?
Regarding our appeal?
Our appeal.
They found mistakes. However, the mistakes they found were all, were all within our geographic boundaries.
Right.
So essentially offset one another.
Right, it was a wash.
So bottom line is, you have two ways to accomplish it. If you want to wait for it, you either expend the money for another special census, which you roll the dice again, or you wait 10 years for the next one, or you put it on as a referendum.
I think you're exactly right, and I'd like to see that.
Yeah, because the next regular census is 2020.
Right.
It'll be six years.
And I can honestly sit here and say, I will be more than willing to go out and work and push for home rule status.
I know, two other people that will, too.
Well, it gives it time for the residents.
To see what happens.
To see, not only see what happens.
The result.
But they're also learning what the consequences of it was. So we've got two years to see budgets, to see whatever has to be done. And at that point there, they'll see what home rule got them.
Oh, yeah.
And what it didn't get them.
Right, right.
Okay, but that's my suggestion.
No, I think it's a good one.
I do, too.
Sounds like everybody's in agreement with that.
Next agenda?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All I got.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn to executive session, Emery.
Second, Nero.
For setting the price.
Sales price of real estate.
Sales price of land.
Do we have second?
Yep.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Newhart.